Make sure my stuff. Okay, I'll call the video of the whole PD Monday, July 7th, 2025 to order. Items for discussion, the Water Protection and Advisory Committee report. Does the Water Protection and Advisory Committee's report be received for information? Okay, we're set. Counsel Reed and Counsel Stavary, all in favor of discussing, sorry. And I will be calling, you know, they come to have a say something.
Well, I'm just speaking on behalf of the committee to the members here in Arrow Lee. And I'm speaking on behalf of the entire committee. We want to thank the council for giving us the opportunity to sit on this committee. I think a lot of us learned a lot. I said that in a couple of the public meetings that we were not water experts. Maybe Shuck was probably the closest being a water expert in Arrow Lee through her schooling. But we didn't know the canal flat system. So we certainly did learn a lot, and I do thank you for allowing us to take this on. It was a big challenge, and at first it was very daunting. But once we got our rhythm going, it was pretty good. And I must thank the community, the members of the community who took time to stop us on the street and ask us questions, to look at the pamphlets and say, hey, what is this all about? To send us emails to the Water Committee email address that we had. It was a very good response. The three meetings that we had, we kind of were thinking, you know, will we have if we see 10 or 15 people? And with each of the three meetings, we had 45 to 50 people attend each of those meetings. Now, some people did attend all three, but we were very pleased. The majority were new faces I haven't seen before. So we really did get the information out there. And I think that they were very good at giving us their feedback. Some were very passionate in giving us their feedback. But by the third meeting, I noticed that passion had started to somewhat come to an understanding of where we were trying to go with this. We did want to reiterate to the members of the community, we were not making the decisions. What we were doing at these meetings were asking what their thoughts are and passing it along to you, the council, who will then take the information that we put in the report that you have. And you will decide how and what moves forward, if any of it. So I guess just I wanted to take a moment to say thank you for giving us the opportunity. It was a long haul, but I think most of us enjoyed most of the time. There were some times where we were kind of going, where do we go from here? But we got it figured out, and I really do feel proud of the report that was put together and the time that was spent by each of the members. We all worked really hard. So that's all I wanted to say.
Do you mind answering some questions, Counsel, if there isn't?
Certainly, and we all do that, and Arrow Lee as well, for sure. Do you want me to stay standing here, or should I? Then we can go from there, who's going to answer? Does that seem fair? Sounds good, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Well, I was, I was hoping that the committee would present the report rather than just having us read it because there is some scientific stuff in here. I feel that it was written in fairly plain language. But for the purposes of the town and of this recording and of this particular meeting, I was really hoping that, you know, there would be like going through the report title by title, line by line, because that creates a documented record for everybody to go back and for us as council to be able to refer to within the public. In the absence of that or in having that that piece prepared, the one thing, I'll just go through the different pieces and I'll start with one question, and I'll turn it over to somebody else and maybe they can ask another. One of the things that we talked about that's mentioned in the report is the wells that might be improperly capped. And there's several different types of wells in and around canal flats. So how as a council do we go about? Because there's some that are private, some that are industrial, some are dry. How do we go about actually capping those wells? What do we need to do as a council to make it so that we can? That might be more of a question for the mayor, through the mayor to the C O.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Great question, Dr. Lorizel. I'm not sure 100%, but this was. We've received the report at the same time as council. This would definitely be a conversation held with Public Works Administration on how to process that. I'm assuming it would start with letters, honestly, and trying to find the information we need from the registered wells that the people have registered. And anecdotally, we are aware of some that are not registered. I'm under the impression that the committee did do some work and contacted some of the people that did have wells on their property. And so taking that information and proceeding with that. I'm not sure about the water bylaw, if it addresses it in there, but that might be something the council, they could come back to council and put it in the water regulation. But if you have a well, it must be capped off, must. Can't be any of those kinds of things, that might, that might be something for future.
So what, so what we would. So what, so yeah, because I'm just basically wondering like, what authority do we as the town or as the council have? Like, so if it's not currently in a bylaw, do we have to make it part of a bylaw? Do we have to kind of force inspection? What gives us the right to go on to another person's property and tell them, you know, whether their well is good or not good?
I can speak to that a little bit, if you can hear me. So it is under the Provincial Groundwater Protection Regulation right now. So one route the village could take is contacting the, I believe it's a groundwater protection officer through the provincial government. That is their jurisdiction. Another option would be going through a bylaw so that Public Works could be responsible for that as well. But there is a way of enforcing it without actually enforcing it yourselves.
If it's in the water service area, a water, a municipal property, sort of property must already be connected to the water service. They don't have an option, a property doesn't have an option to pick and choose which service. They, in bylaws, it says you shall connect to that service if your property is located in that service. So council can with, you know, enforce that and say you will connect. There's the deadline. Failing to do so is subject to fines. That is already in place. And there is currently through the municipal ticketing bylaw, the, the C O, the corporate officer, the bylaw enforcement officer, the fire chief, and the Public Works Coordinator slash foreman are already allowed to go on any property as it stands right now.
So Arlene and I, we went out and did a little experiment that sits in the, in the report. But I talked to three property owners that have no idea and never see a well on their property that is registered on there. And it's part of the G A R P, like it's in the catch basin. So I think it's important that the town have, have all the registered wells and see which ones are even existing anymore? Because a lot of those dots could just disappear. There was three, there was three just right uptown here that I went and talked to and had no idea that they had there was ever a well.
Okay. But maybe that's something.
So I, so I think a lot of the wells that say are registered, I don't believe are even existing. And maybe it would be, you know, it. I don't know how much it costs to properly cap a well, but I imagine that if we just sent somebody a letter saying, you have a well on your property, whether you knew it or not, you have to pay for capping it. I don't know if, or are we going to have to recoup and maybe help some of these owners so for them to do it? I know we don't have like anything in our water contingency. But, you know, I know if it were me, I'd be pretty shocked because depending on what the cost would be to do that. But maybe that first step, like you say, is sending a letter to everywhere that is a registered well currently. And do we know where the unregistered wells are? Chuck, maybe?
No, and I don't know if it's a sort of individual registered well.
And there are currently people on Bailey Gromon, am I right, that are on well?
Yeah.
And so with what you're saying is that if they're on a well, we in theory could force them to connect, is that what you're saying?
Got that water going by there.
Okay, so there's no water running there.
Yeah.
So there, there's not, you know, that's not part of our water service area is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
These 60 active wells are listed somewhere. Do they have an address list, keys to those?
I just thought about that.
Do you have, we have a list. I guess I would. There's work to be done that come from this report, and it's a really well-written report. I thank you for your efforts on that. I think we're going to have to do things like get 60 wells, get addresses for them. Somebody's going to have to go look at all 60. That staff, probably staff or contractor. Identify if you can find it. I know I did some work on a house, just up the road. And we went down the basement, there was a nice hole in the ground, about 15 feet deep, it had a piece plywood over it. And we filled it with, just filled it with gravel. We just made cap on it, called it a day. You guys should see the water in the bottom. So that's probably just the act for about 15 meters or five meters deep. I think that caps in a very safe manner. And I think it's probably not all that expensive. That's one of these individuals. I suspect that a lot of them have been filled in in the same way. So that's the kind of the work that I see doing that needs to be done on a, we have to identify all of them. And if you find others, great, put them on the list. One of the things that we talked about here in the, the wells, I was talking about there are three supply wells from the village, some sort of three in the water column, right? Some of the, they're not apparently in the report, but they haven't been properly sealed at the top.
Yeah, I always question that.
Yeah.
There's, there's a pump, water sitting on top of the well.
Yeah. Those are the building, are they not?
They're in the building, they're.
They are sealed, I believe they're sealed on.
They're, they're above grade.
Yeah. There's two of them in, from my understanding, two of them in the building and one just three on the others. Would not one of those things be to, I guess this kind of breaks down to, there's no money. But there's work that could be done relatively inexpensive. And one of those would be the buildability around the skills, picking well up, which would be one of the items listed as problem.
This submersible well does not keep that. It's, it's capped property, it's mounted around the property. The two with the building though currently are the ones they were questioning.
Yeah, the question, the ones in the build, yeah. Is that, what's, what's correct answer, that they're all sealed, what?
I think they are.
So in the G A R P report, they said that they weren't sealed properly. Yeah, like Shuck said, I don't know how true that is, but that was what the contractor, I guess Atkins Realis was saying about them.
I questioned that too when they said that because it's in the building. Building's above grade.
And then the well itself protrudes out of the concrete floor. With a motor sealed, sitting on top of it.
Yeah. No, I see that, I understand that. That's why I was wondering why the other one was in a similar situation.
It's not required to be in a building. Yeah, because it's a submersible, the motor, the pump, everything is in the water pool surface already without a sealed cap.
So they're saying it is properly sealed, proper. So because that's what, what I'm understanding is the groundwater that could flow into that area. We can tap it, the well, but you're saying it's fine, so.
It would have to be a lot of water.
Have a lot to have a lot more of.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think we're likely to have a chunk, we are water, judging from people there.
Well, is it, does it cost the village anything to ask those guys to expound on their report on like, what do they mean by that? Because everybody's like, yeah, we want it, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Even if there's a nominal V, it would be a little bit.
Well, it's just that we, because we have a situation in the report that says they're not sealed, so.
And yeah, I have, it's like, I believe they are still limited, shocking. Everything looks good to me.
Yes.
So. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Would it be a case of building security for the building ones, maybe?
Well, they're locked.
Yeah.
They're locked, but are they concerned about the strength of the lock?
I think they were concerned about ground lock.
Ground lock, that's what we were told, yeah.
But you need roughly close to two feet of water in there, excuse me, get into the well as it is. That's a lot of water.
Yeah.
And even that's sealed on top still, right?
And they're sealed from the bottom.
Yes. Go ahead.
I might suggest that if you are getting in touch with them, why would we not take a picture of the building and take a picture of how the pump sits and the, you know, the cement pad, et cetera, and just say, we just don't understand how this could not be in compliance? When here's all the photos, you know, include maybe photos with it when you send it. So you don't have to wait for them to come here and then go back and, and it just takes twice as long. Just a suggestion.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Like generally, or?
Under the issues groundwater's risk pathogens. We have a hazard called D1. The, what's, what's the explanation of a D1 and the D2?
That would be early.
Yeah.
I'm just flipping to that page just a second. So, oh yes, so these are the, the D hazards are the aquifer type and setting. So hazard D1 is to do with shallow intake of the water. So when it comes to groundwater, generally speaking, the deeper the water is, the safer it is because it's further from the surface where we're doing activities industrial or, you know, farming or there's floodwaters. So the deeper it is, the longer the water takes to get to that intake level. Our wells are less than 15 meters below ground surface. And so that itself is a hazard. So that can be mitigated by having a deeper well, a well deeper than 15 meters. D2 is one, a hazard that, it's the only hazard that we cannot get rid of aside from treating the water. Our aquifer is defined as highly vulnerable, and that's because it's a sand and gravel aquifer without any confining layer or a continuous confining layer. So that just means that water moves from the surface down into the aquifer very quickly, making it, yeah, vulnerable to contamination from floodwaters, from industrial activities, all of that sort of things. Does that help? Do you have any follow-up questions on that?
Well, that's, that's why I thank you, I, I do. So what, what is to stop us? Because like we're saying that we can't get rid of paths with D2. But what is to stop us from conducting something even on our existing well site? Where we actually try to drill down as far as we go until we say hit, you know, go past bedrock all the way through the clay, like trying to see if there is that confined layer that is going to hopefully protect us against something like floodwaters? Is that a possibility? If we found it, you know, would, do you think that might? I guess because you can't speak for a G A R P inspector, but do you think that might help mitigate some of what's going here?
Yeah, so it is possible, and there was one well drilled quite a long time ago. I, it's close to like where the man shed is now, it's been since closed off. But they did hit bedrock. I don't know if that bedrock holds any water. I don't know how productive it is. The thing that would stop the village from doing that would just be cost because it's an exploratory thing, so it could be great. It could be the solution to all of the problems, and we just have a really deep well. Of course, pumping would take more energy because there's further for the water to go. Or that bedrock could have hardly any cracks in it, so it could have hardly any water in it. And then you've just wasted money on drilling down there. But you're right, like it would be a potential solution, it's just we really don't know until we drill.
Could you go still on the same, like the same well site right now? Be trying to go deeper in our same site, and would that make any sense?
Yes, even just for eliminating the D1 hazard, which is the 15 meters below ground surface. Say you brought it down to 20. That would then eliminate that one hazard in like B C Health's eyes. Although they want all the hazards eliminated. And from my perspective as the groundwater specialist, that would be something that would make the water safer. It wouldn't mitigate all risks, but generally deeper water is safer water.
Yeah.
And as far as bedrock goes, I don't know what's down there or how deep it is. It's one of those things you just got to drill to find out.
So if you drill a well, and you go down and you get contaminated water, would that, uh, potentially, we're talking about touches a lot of ways, potentially contaminated water?
Sorry, could you repeat that? I just couldn't quite hear it.
If you, if you drill a well, it opens up a shaft down deep. So you don't know what's down there. But you had something that would contaminate. Because now you would give the contaminated water instead of the lower bedrock deeper.
So it's very unlikely that that water would be contaminated by anthropogenic means. So like by industrial stuff or bacteria. However, there are certain types of contamination that are inherent in the rocks. So selenium is sometimes present in rocks. You might have heard about that a bit in the Elk Valley. So the mining waste rocks hold selenium. And if that's exposed, it leaches selenium into the water. So you could potentially have what they call geogenic contamination, which is usually a heavy metal from the rock down there. Given the type of rock that's in this area, it would probably be a sedimentary rock. And that would probably not be an issue. I'm not aware of any of the rocks in the valley bottom having like arsenic or selenium or anything like that. But again, we don't really know until we drill. However, I think the risk for contaminating the upper water would be really low. Like the way that the water would move between the two, I don't think that that would be a big issue. It just might be an issue in terms of maybe we can't drink that water that's in the bedrock because it has too much of arsenic or something like that, for example. Does that answer your question a bit?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
So in having said that about drilling deeper, I'm not sure if the reason that question's being asked to the fact that we feel that if we have a deeper well, it will shut down the idea of a treatment, water treatment plant. When we were discussing this in the committee meetings, we had Jennifer Beverly there, and she was saying there are many people, many communities that have deep wells that are still being asked to treat. And she said it would be highly unlikely, but not impossible. Even if we did drill down, we would still be asked to have a water treatment plant. So it's just, you're gonna, we're gonna have to decide, right? Plus, we don't have, we did discuss this in the committee, and please, if I'm saying something incorrect, please correct me. In the committee meetings, we did talk about drilling wells. And we just don't have much land to drill unless you're going to drill the well we already have and see if you can go further. But we just don't have opportunity to drill because most of our town doesn't belong to the community, so we can't drill on, I can't go into Andrew's yard and say, I'm going to drill a well, and here we go. So that was a bit of a challenge when we were discussing that as well. But I did want council to know, we did discuss the drilling of deeper wells. It is costly, and we got the feeling from interior health that it would not stop water treatment. There might, there, it could, there's a small chance, but she kind of made us feel that it would not stop. We would still be asked to, to go forward with water treatment.
Okay, go ahead.
I agree, I had a conversation with Jennifer Beverly, and she basically said that we would be prolonging the inevitable. So we would be spending a lot of money and don't have to treat.
Okay, anything else?
There's, the hobby farm is mentioned a few times in here. It also mentions the fact that the water is flowing underneath the ground northwest. And with where that hobby farm is located and where our wells are located, I'm just curious as to how, there's this talk about manure and fertilizers and things like that. Where the hobby farm comes into play with that, when the water's direction is pushing towards the springs?
Go ahead, yeah.
Well, I guess the G A R P, we would have to ask, you know, the company that did it, you know, Atkins Realis, if they did the G A R P report. But we don't, one of the things that we did, again, talk about this committee, is you're not sure. Yes, the water, we think flows this way, but it doesn't mean that a section of water, there might be pots of water sitting so that manure, you know, we have a big brain, and, and it takes that water and that one little pocket of water sits here and it drains into the aquifer, the main one that's going there and could cause a risk, right? A contamination risk. So I guess if you have heard of questions on why do we feel that's quite a, a high risk, a possible potential risk? With Atkins Realis, because they're the ones that made that call and said, these are potential, the potential risks that are there, sorry, and I think Shuck might have had something.
It's, oh, sorry.
This is, they're within 300 meters. 300 meters of the wells.
That's the much the direction.
Not so much direction, full more. For example, there's a hobby farm that's in 300.
Like a circular proximity, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Which way it's going.
And that's part of the provincial regulations, that's where they got that 300 meters from.
All right, we did, we did our little experiment, what, what direction? Like we tested depth of wells through D more, C, the C, I guess, or, or whatever it was. But we kind of come to the conclusion that we are running a little bit westwardly, yes, or north?
Yeah, we're generally running northwest based on the work that Sean and I did. It, with groundwater, because we can't see it, there is always a margin of error. And I think that probably a provincial hydrogeologist said, you know what? 300 meters is a safe margin of error that we're willing to accept. So even though if the, anything from a hobby farm probably doesn't go to the wells, that's the margin of error they're willing to accept for the inherent uncertainty that comes with groundwater flow. But yeah, we do go generally northwest.
Did we ever get a map of what the act looks like? Estimating it could look like?
I think we did have one, yeah.
There is one, but if not in our report.
There is one in the.
In the G A R P report.
Yes.
It's out in the G A R P, is it?
No, it would be in the, in the Golden Report.
We don't roll that one off, huh?
Yeah, it was, yeah, I can get it to you.
Well, that's what's kind of curious as to what the act first. One of the things I have a concern about here is we have water that's 15 feet down. It flows at a pretty good rate, let's start at the lake. The water that comes down the Kootenay River starts at the Great Divide and is basically in a national park, so there isn't large herds of animals or anything like that to contaminate that water on its flow. Probably over the last 100 years. Probably over the last hundred years, this has been a safe act. We not have, that I'm aware of any kind of a problem and. We could do a lot of things. Uh, to treat this water, do whatever, and probably not gain anything. Uh, from my, from our work. I mean, we, that, we could probably live here in the valley because of where that water comes from. For another hundred years without ever having contamination. As long as it's not major changes from that water wall.
I agree with you a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, so we again discussed that with the three year health as our lives and Jennifer. And she said, yes, she 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 agrees with that, and that was one of our challenges with speaking to the general public. Was they have your sentiment, right, and didn't cross all of our minds. We need to do what? I've lived here forty years and I don't remember a boil water advisory, now I can't really say that. I said at one of the meetings, there were children at school one year, that everybody at school was sick and throwing up and. Parents were sick, I don't know, maybe that was water contamination. Because nobody tested it, nobody said anything, right, I mean, it could have been, I can't prove it was, and I can't prove it wasn't. So interior health says, yes, I hear what you're saying, never had an issue. But we are concerned that we're gonna have to take the brunt of it if they're injured. And we don't want anyone to get ill, so we know what you're saying. But we're putting a water treatment, we're requesting that you put on your permit of places a water treatment plant in. Because we don't want anyone to get sick on the conditions of permit they're requesting.
So I have a question for Sean. Uh, so i- if we did put a uh treatment plant in. How how would that work, like how much chlorine would be going into our water?
I can't give you a number.
No, okay.
It's all depends on the. Myself, I personally think there'd be so very little chlorine in water. Because there's nothing to kill.
That, yes.
Treat, because water is good, it's there more as a safety than anything. As long as you have a residual, they call it, in lines, however much. Chlorine it takes to meet their residuals, you know, yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
And uh early, I'm not sure if we lost her or she had to step away, but I do recall her stating that when it comes to. The water treatment plant and chlorine, most of the time, the only time you smell the chlorine or taste it. Is when it's working. If you, if you have the community or you have good water and there's nothing happening. I don't know if it's because the amount that we're putting in it is small, but she said you won't hurt, you won't even notice. Now, some people have extremely good taste, sensitive taste and and can smell, they may notice it slightly. But most of the time, uh if there is no reason for it to be doing its job, you wouldn't notice it. Now, I do see Arlie's back, so she might wanna comment on this if she heard what I was saying.
I did, I was here, my lovely husband just brought me dinner and I didn't want you to see me eating, um but I was here, go hold on. I um, yeah, so the thing that makes you taste chlorine in the water is called chloramine. And it's what happens when the chlorine reacts with dissolved organic matter in the water. And so that would be present in surface water, so things like, yeah, manure or. Yeah, just or decaying plant matter, that sort of thing. So when the chlorine reacts with that, that's when you get that like swimming pool smell, and so. If you're ever at a swimming pool and it smells really, really, really strong of chlorine, that's from like people peeing in the swimming pool. Um, uh, but the general chlorine smell at the swimming pool is from our body oils, which are organic matter. Because our groundwater has really low organic matter, we probably wouldn't taste very much, so I live in Kimberly. And even though we get our water from Mark Creek, it generally has very low dissolved organic matter, except a little bit in the spring. And we hardly taste the chlorine, um, yeah, that's the, a little bit of the the science behind that.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I can add something to Arlie, if the water is bad tasting coming in, it doesn't matter how much chlorine you. Put in or out, it's still gonna taste bad. If you have it's new water to start with, you might alter it a little bit, but some communities have. Icky water to start with.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
So we've had lots of discussions on the committee about the chlorine thing and not the chlorine thing. And I'm I'm opposed to the chlorine things, but well, a lot of people. So I I already did a, a bit of a. Formula on the millions of gallons of water that flow through underneath us every day. Now, if we're just gonna spend five million bucks, I think it's in the report too, to.
Yeah.
To send all over, if we're gonna spend five million bucks, like maybe, maybe an interior house that's happy with. We build a lab and we test the water daily, so we can see. If we're incrementing up to a boil water advisory round then. Oh, we send it away, we do it on Tuesday, we say we get it back on Friday, it's too late, everybody's sick. But if we were doing it daily, maybe all the rest of the communities in town are in the valley, maybe they wanna get their water tested as well. And we can maybe make a bit of a revenue line, but for five million bucks. I just don't like, I just, may- maybe we're still just kicking the can down the road, maybe we're kicking it a long ways down the road. I don't know what a lab would cost and to operate, but, or maybe a water treatment plant. Something like that, and those guys, they are the dealers, they test our water every day, and then we we make sure that our water is gonna be good. Like, that's just something for the council to consider, like it's, like.
I don't, I still don't believe flooring is the, I don't think, you know, the statement is the answer either. Now, I would think every year that goes by goes up by another million bucks.
Well, at our, at our last council meeting, we just amended a bylaw in our industrial zone to reduce the lot sizes. In there, so there's opportunity for something like a lab to go into our industrial zone, I believe, but, all right?
Hmm, probably not, they, yeah, could, sure.
But yeah, that would be, no, the council, that's your guys' like, that's, that's like, these, these, these are just all suggestions for you guys.
Yeah.
So look at and try to figure out, do you bite the bullet and you just go with the chlorine or do you say, oh, we're like, we wanna stand our ground and we wanna. Figure a way to keep material health happy and keep everybody here healthy. But for never having a boil water advisory in sixty years, I gotta say now, like, it's not like we're at risk.
But that's, that's the, that's the word of the day that that runs in the G A R P report.
At risk and liability is two words that come to mind.
That's my.
Potential risk.
Yes. Sorry, potential risk.
Yeah.
And a potential liability, uh, go ahead, Paul. I just, uh, you know, like, I'm not against the chlorine, that's foreign raised purpose. That you needed chlorine because of speed lots, sort of glasses. Water was shallow, water was deep, we had what, people who could strike a match with flame. Natural gas. The cost factors that we're facing for a village with what, four hundred and some odd taxpayers that follow us. Are beyond belief. There is, you could raise everybody's water bill by a thousand dollars a year and it would take you. Fifteen, twenty years to pay for it, it's just like a math is undoable. The situation we have to meet the demands of. Uh, interior health, the province is the province, interior health. Take God proud of, of take care of the people in this province. I can't think that we're the only village, we're only town, our only area that has problems, we know that. Because they spent billions and millions places like Surrey, on the island, etc. Trying to protect this, so in my mind, we do everything we can. I E, build the dike around our pumps, seal the damn thing, build a building over. We do those kind of things, bylaws so that we can check on all these wells. All of those are things that we could do, staff are relatively expensive. Because I don't care how you cut it, because in the next ten years, you decide that we're going to put in a five million dollar plant. It's not happening, it just can't happen unless somebody comes along to handle. And indications from what a mayor and councillor, what you did in preceding meetings, what passed here, you have that. That there's no money for canal flats. There's no money for any small town. There you go, so, there's where you could beat this thing to death. And then we have to go back and see what we can do that'll mitigate the risks without spending millions of dollars. And put our community at risk. Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Doherty, um, so as I mentioned last council meeting, there is a grant opportunity a hundred percent funded. For infrastructure, um, Mr. Prongk and I are working with the engineers to prepare this grant application. And it would be for some of the water upgrades to address some of these issues. Um, so looping the system, upgrading, adding, stopping the dead ends that we have, things like that. So if you can elaborate on the more technical things of course.
The more technical, yeah.
Basically, around with the master upgrade plan.
Yeah.
That's basically what granted.
Okay.
So.
In a nut, in a nutshell, right, thanks, all the infrastructure.
What we have to get it or? Yeah, get it, how much?
Uh, well, it's a five billion dollar grant, I think. No.
Oh, your new husband. To put on those lights, let me just pull it.
No, uh, we're not, uh, that's what the engineers are working for on for the amount.
Yeah.
But um, it would be a hundred percent funded, which we could afford if we were to see that.
Yeah, that's pretty very good, but that's not talking anything about doing the water.
No, but it, but this, what, from what I understand is as long as we're working towards the conditions that interior health has put. On the permit, that they will work with us until.
Yeah.
Till the end, so we we don't have to treat the water next year. That we, but if we're working towards fire flow, if we're working towards um. The safety, the looping, the, all the, all the upgrades that are required for the system. We're working in the right direction.
Yeah, that's, I agree. And that's what I just said, it's the, you know, you do what you can at a reasonable cost, and each one mitigates. Go ahead, again.
So there are many other communities that are in the same situation as us. We did speak with the C A O, a dean from LA of Greenwood City. They are a retirement community of, I think he said, seven hundred people. And they just got told last year, you have to put in a water treatment plant, and they had no money. So they got their M L A involved and they got government involved and they did get, I think, three point five million. And they had to come up with, because he says it's costing five million. Um, to get this water treatment plant up and running, and they are going with the chlorine version because it is the cheaper one to do. Um, but also Sylvie is correct, we did when we spoke with interior health. I I mean, we can't, we can't drag our feet and make this go on for twenty years, and I think interior health are gonna, you know. Put, put their brakes on and say, okay, you know, but if we start showing that we are mitigating. Uh, you know, we look at the things that the G A R P report is saying, your uh derelict vehicles, your hobby farms. Your, let's check, make sure all our pumps are sitting proper, um, and and, or wells, I'm sorry, pots. Um, then maybe they will sit back a bit, but. And if we do, maybe we don't have to go to chlorination, maybe. Depending on what we can do with deeper wells, if that was what you wanna do. Uh, I will, I would think that we are gonna end up doing chlorination because it is the cheapest. Uh, even at five million, and you're right, as we sit back, this five million will become ten million. And it is inevitable, we will probably, we will be putting in a water treatment plant.
And and we did, just, we we are working with the M L A and other communities on how we can. Dedicate a lot of this stuff to, uh, go ahead.
I was gonna actually speak to that, so we have spoken with Scott McInnes, our local representative. Also, we have a uh motion on the floor, it's going to U B C M. It passed um very, very highly. Um, with our local government when we went to the um A K P L G. So, so that's really passed on, and that was for funding for um smaller municipalities. Especially that are being required by government to to place in. You know, like a water treatments and things like that, so so that motion is on the floor and it's gained a lot of ground, um, and so.
And I believe that's why the grants are coming.
Yeah, tho- those are things that we are working towards.
Doherty, um, and also I wanted to say that I attended a workshop two weeks ago. Three weeks ago regarding this grant and other grants um through the province and the federal government and. There will be another intake similar to this in two years.
Good.
So if we aren't successful this year, then we apply again and, you know. What does help with our application is the conditions on permit from interior health. And that all these studies have been done, all this will form part of the application, the water master plan, this report. The G A R P assessment, all of it.
Uh, go ahead, anybody else got any more questions? Then go ahead.
Um, in part of the uh, the recommendations, we're talking about just increasing some of the fees for uh the fixtures. And for the uh, 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 which we call the plumbing and then additional fixtures. So, do we really make a lot of money with that right now? Because it it has to be for new development, am I correct?
Uh, we, we don't make a lot of money, no, it subsidizes the the service. Um, we are still collecting, are using general taxation dollars for services like water and sewer, which is a no-no. And so um, it is on my to-do list, it is, was a request from council to review the water and sewer fees both. Uh, and that is coming to council to call.
Can you remind me, what's our, because it's a parcel tax, considering going down on the water?
Correct, it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars per property. Um, and that's only if you're in the service area and not um outside of the service area and for. Uh, the water user fees for those that are connected is three hundred and forty dollars. And then if you pay for them in February, get ten percent off of that. And that comes out of general taxation. So some people are paying towards water and sewer that aren't even eligible to have the service. Which is, that's why it's a no-no, it should be soft on it, so our fees really do.
I'm, I'm thinking that the committee. The committee hasn't done any pricing on things like metering or costs for that. Yeah, go ahead, yeah. That was the.
Because we were under the understanding that we were to put together recommendations. You were to decide uh which recommendations you might be to move forward with and then hence pricing. Um, it just, it got to the point where there were just so many variables. So how do we even, we may not even give you the right pricing.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Because there's so many variables, so we just felt that. Um, trying not to think too far outside the box to make it to, uh, you know, so it's not going to be workable. For the commit, community, so um, yeah, we just didn't go into pricing.
Okay, okay, I'm sure it's really hard too, because right now, without water meters on anybody's house, nobody knows how many cubic liters they're using. In, in a day, in a month, in a year, um, you know, I I know it says that we use a lot comparatively, but like you say, some of that's for blowout. Uh, doing things like that. Uh, there's some discussion about uh, like, that there's some small scale ag- agriculture that poses some, some risk to us. I'm just curious, where is that, like, small scale agriculture? Um, this, I'm, I'm using like from our last council meeting, this up age one thirty-nine of our last council meeting. Um, it just talks about uh. Pathogens, nutrient levels, uh, if the village chooses to treat its water, it'll reduce that risk. But I just wonder where what, where is that small scale agriculture in our, like in our catch area currently? It's right around um.
That agriculture, eh, I would think is just the hobby farm. I'm not aware of anything else in town, I mean, some people keep horses, but. My recommendation around that was more around if there were future developments in that, in that way, like somebody wanted to. Well, for example. Well, for example, the marijuana grow up, the way they're doing it is, it sounds to me not like it would, from what I know. Um, not like it would contaminate the soil, but say they wanted to do that differently. And it was gonna be more of like an outdoor operation, then that would be something council would wanna consider is just the possibility that that could increase nitrate levels or potentially introduce contamination into the aquifer.
Are there bylaws at other communities that talk about, like, if, if people are going to farm or, or do those sorts of things? How they use fertilizers, for example, what they're allowed to use, are, are, are there restrictions that we as a council can impose on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
We, bylaws it.
Hey.
Hmm, no, but at this point, we do not have any bylaws that restrict fertilizer or pesticides or anything like that, but that is definitely something that could be.
Absolutely, yeah.
Reviewed and adopted now.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
So in the report, we did include the Kelowna testing by bylaw, just to give us a, you know, give an idea because we did talk about, do we start formulating all the bylaws for you, and then, and then we thought maybe what we do is just give examples, because it depends, we may not have all the same things. You know, lots of wineries in Kelowna, I don't know, do they use something different on their crops? And so we may have to, but we did include that one that, that we have a link to, so we'd an idea anyway.
Well.
We were worried too about, um, people, you know, we're talking about manure, you know, the guard report says there's manure in, in the hobby farm. So then, you know, we're talking as a group and saying, okay, well, if there's manure in, in the hobby farm, then what about the person that brings in two truckloads of manure and dumps it on their twenty-four by twenty-four foot garden? Should we be concerned about that? Now, I know it's been happening for years, so these were some of the things that we were discussing and thought that it could be included. I don't want anybody not to have a good garden by any means. But you, you kind of have to start, you know, you look at one thing and before you know it, it, it takes steps of its own. And then you have to start thinking of the big picture. So we just don't know how as a community, how far we'd like to take that.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
And I will just, oh, sorry, I was just gonna clarify, I wouldn't, like, I'm personally and professionally not that concerned about, um, nitrates, like, in the canal flats aquifer. The levels are really low right now, and up to ten milligrams per liter is considered safe. I think we have like, I think the highest reading was like one point eight milligrams per liter. Um, I, it's in the report, um.
Yeah.
So if it's not within three hundred meters of the well sites, which is where the bacteria and viruses come into play, I really wouldn't be that concerned about it unless, yeah, like some big operation is gonna come in and put a lot of fertilizer down. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Wouldn't the fact that we have, as I think you said, millions of liters going through our, under our town every day? Could be out, you know, wouldn't that kind of flush out any of that just naturally? I mean, if you have a desert where something, something, then you were like you said, break, wash it down. Wouldn't the flushing action of the river on the beach is basically get rid of it very quickly?
So that's, um, a big part of the reason why I think we haven't had any issues, um, that we're aware of. However, it is very difficult to prove exactly how much is moving through. And our concentrations of contaminants in the water are low because of that effect. But the risk is still there, if that makes sense. So that flushing is probably what keeps our water good. But Interior Health is concerned that because there are like low levels of contaminants, those might, and risk factors for there being higher level of contaminants, that it might become more. The levels will become higher to the point where it's a risk for human health. But I think you're absolutely right. I think that's why the water quality has been so good, is because it just moves.
There's, um, the list of, bunch of, of the activities that you've listed out that, uh, you were comfortable with having happening. Um, the leather or high standing sets, folks, it's still happening here?
Sorry, which?
With, uh, all of the, uh, industrial commercial proofs.
Mm-hmm.
But I think this is a be, these are things that we don't want in our village because of that.
Sure.
Um, is that leather or high standing, we had a.
It's actually. It might be a hobby now, and so.
Yeah, okay. We talked about welding in machine shops, we have, it's an iron. We talked about not having, uh, service stations, joining natural gas, uh, storage facilities like the store, the gas plant, those are all regulated by, by province. By the province, and they're all double wall tanks, there's a whole bunch of stuff they have to do. Is that really getting the situation where we have to work? Because if the pound grows and you get new opportunities, like tell me why you wanna build a service station and have tanks? Like, is this, this kind of thing gonna deter us from having that, uh?
I believe all the tanks now are above ground tanks.
Yes, absolutely. It'll be above ground, we.
In ground, okay.
There's, you'd have to put it in a.
Here, you'd have a half of the time trying to do it, cause.
Yeah.
Well, that's a film I first to put.
They're, uh, they're in larger centers because, well, they can fire.
For sure.
But they also have to be put in a, like, control coffin.
Okay.
Inside of a, you know.
Um.
It feel dirty, or they were in Alberta where else?
No, not really, uh, so they're, they're just dropped in the ground. Uh, they do have double wall construction.
There was.
Uh, but they're just dropped into a gravel pit.
Yeah. Yeah, we're.
Okay, go ahead, uh, sure.
I, I think in the reported, I can advise that maybe we just follow up with spill containment, um, plans and things like that, so, so. So get.
Me and our spill opener, it's, we're, luckily we, that was it really, really quickly, efficient, man.
Yeah.
So that didn't actually hit our groundwater, but lowest it went, I think it was two meters.
But regardless, I think it's probably good practice for us to, you know, have any spill containments for any higher risk businesses, right? If, I mean, I mean, you already have it, so why, why wouldn't we just make sure that we?
Kind of, that should be.
Needs to happen, right?
All right, so for here, if we can put a high mark, it's basically they all have to be above ground. Yeah, I, I don't see why not.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, particularly here, we, we're low volumes, but.
Yeah, I honestly, I don't think any engineer would ever approve that blow map tank with the aquifer is so high.
Yeah.
That they think with. Yeah, go ahead.
And of course, in that groundwater protection bylaw, you're wanting the spill containment, uh, policy or, or, um, plan from the, from that, uh, business. But I think also you should mention that they need to let you know when a spill has happened. So that we can watch for something in the water testing when we're sending it away. Plus, we should also ask to see the final report on the cleanup process. So I don't know if that's something we want to include, but it might be something to follow up. We're a very small community, so if something spills, we may see it, but we may not. So I think if there is a spill, I think that business should come forward to the community and say, we've had a spill. We've done this and provide their final report on, like you said, you've got everything done, cleared, everything's cleaned up.
Well, like, when, when there is spills, when there is, when there's a spill, so anyways, and we should, we should be getting that report as well.
Since you brought it up, Council Stanley, we were advised.
Yes.
And you have to price of what the developments were.
Yeah.
That's, good, thank you.
Look, just, uh, the, your companies, the truck drivers, and everything have to count for every liter of fuel. And so if someone is, one of a thousand liters, there's something better be. Where's, where's the money for it, and where's the problems?
Uh, any other questions?
Uh, the other, the interesting one is road salt storage facilities and, uh, it's kind of ironic that they listed in sets that the, uh, provincial government approves using, uh, salt on the highways on a continuing basis, way more so than what we would ever use here on the cell. Like, the, how much of the threat does that give to me? If you have a salt storage, should.
We have a, uh, two percent salt mixture in our sand. We purchase it from Scandia. It comes pre-mixed, we don't actually physically store the salt.
No, no, certainly, yeah. But then, then the sand and the salt spread on the streets, and as the streets are washed off, or the rain and snow is sent to, that's into the soil, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and the highways, same way, they actually use, uh, prior to grade, I think they're percentage higher. Yeah, I'm sure it would be, if that's all going into the water system, you know, obviously is the problem. Or maybe it is, I'm, I'm playing that, is that being considered as a problem throughout the province?
It is actually, it's a, it's a concern that they use so much salt. It is an ongoing environmental issue, especially in like sensitive wetlands and stuff like that, that are by roadways. But I just wanna clarify, so these recommendations on not including Schedule Two activities are totally yours to bend. This is not recommended by Interior Health. I used to work in contaminated sites, and this is the stuff that I saw that wrecked aquifers. Um, so if you think that because the road salt mix, which it sounds like is not really an issue here, if that's not an issue, then you don't need to worry about that, right? But, um, I would also say that this is most important in that area that gold are defined, that goes towards our wells. So like, on the, um, western side of town there, where it's just going into the lake, maybe we do get a new card lock station there or something like that in the future, and I wouldn't be as concerned about that. But this section is really up to council. Um, they're just recommendations to protect the aquifer. You wouldn't have to forbid all Schedule Two activities. You could just say, in this area, we don't want anyone making fertilizer. We don't want anyone making explosives or ammunition, you know, like, these are the activities that we don't include. And I just included all Schedule Two activities, which are under like B C legislation. When I was working in contaminated sites, any of these activities, we would have to investigate to determine if a site was contaminated. So this is like the broad list, you could definitely narrow it down.
Yeah, any other questions?
Just one, um, do we, uh, use or have here at our fire department, the, uh, P F A S, P F A S, do we? Ever have, council? It's not, I, I assume it's not being used during training exercises. Last resort kind of thing.
Uh, yeah. So I have a question, the Canal Flats Community Trust. Um, I read that, that it's something that we bought about too, um. What are your guys' recommendations on, on that, like, what are your thoughts?
Well, we weren't really sure, um, we felt that the community trust, um, came from, it was also kind of tied in with if there's a utility corporation.
Yeah.
There would be a community trust. So we thought, well, is that five hundred dollars or is that five hundred thousand dollars? It really depends on what your utility corporation is. But one of the things that we do feel strongly is, if you do end up having a community trust, it should be run by members of the community only. It should not be council, it should not be administrative staff at the village office. It should be run by the community. And yes, you could take applications, you could see who's interested, and that money goes to, um, say somebody's going away, I don't, some young student wants to go away to train in another country, they may give them a thousand dollars. They may decide they're gonna give it to get hockey back in the arena next year, so they're gonna buy skates for an entire team, I don't know. But they would decide, the community, so that no one feels that someone else is spending money that shouldn't be spent that way. It would be the community members would be deciding where, and maybe they would keep it open and say, we've got these dollars and we're giving it out, or applications come in. Um, but we, that, we just really couldn't define it. We were supposed to come up with, you know, the parameters. But the parameters are so big.
Yeah.
Depending on what the utility corporation could be, and if it's not there, then the trust isn't there.
Uh, go ahead, I always, we looked at it, and it's like, it's, it needs to have its own committee. Yes. You get it, you get another set of people to sit and just figure that out. That's
Right.
way too deep and way too complicated and way too many waters. So, and we had enough water plate with just the water, so that, that thing, that just kind of got put to the side. And.
And we're not, yeah, we weren't sure that it was even gonna happen.
Yeah.
Right? So we just felt that spending the time
On the water.
On the water was so important. This was just kind of.
That's, I think that's its own thing.
Yeah.
You evolve by itself. Go ahead, Paul.
How did, how did you see, or how do you think we would have a utility corporation that, the public network? Explain something about that.
Well, we didn't really go into that because, I mean, we just, we just weren't sure, or we, we just didn't get the parameters of it. And we just felt that the water was bringing such a big time commitment for all of us. And we weren't really sure, cause I heard three different ideas on utility corporations. And I'm not sure if that's what you all think a utility corporation is. For us, it was someone else is gonna run the water and sewer. But, okay, if we're gonna have someone else, it's still gonna belong to the town, the water and the sewer, but we're gonna have someone else oversee it. Which I think kind of happens in Windermere, does it not? So we're not the only community that is thinking of this, other communities do it. I think Fairmont does it as well. Um, but we just, really, wouldn't it depend on the company that's coming in and, and what their idea of it? Like, I don't know, do they wanna own part of the company? Like, they're gonna have to make money at this. But if they're gonna make money, and we're gonna make money off what they're doing, why would we not think about a utility corporation? Why would we not want us to bring in money other than just taxing our community members? So I think it's a great idea, but you really would have to reach out and see to other communities. Maybe you need another committee to reach out, to find out what a utility corporation, or at least a small phone this com- community in this community and say, do you have a utility corporation? Um, how do you run it? Would you mind sharing that with us? Something like that. But, I mean, if we can get a company that's gonna make money, and we're gonna make twenty percent of what they're making for just letting them run our, you know, and maybe it can expand out. Um, I'm not trying to take away Shuck's job or saying maintenance, but we, we got the ball. Not we, but you have the ball on how this, how this corporation could run. So, I mean, if it's an opportunity for us to make some money, think outside the box, instead of just upping the water and sewer rates, would we not at least try to reach out and find out if it's not a feasible idea? So we just, we were just so focused on water that it, it was, we just weren't.
Second here, that, that's a whole, that's a whole long, I don't know. Okay, any more questions?
Just a, just a comment on, uh, on Miss Lake's comment there. I, I, I do agree that it, thinking outside the box is really, really important right now, and, and as Paul, who, who earlier, on a tax base, four hundred some odd households, it's just, it's, it's not feasible for us to be able to, to do this all on our own. The one thing that it's really hard to balance, or that I, I think is hard to balance, is that of what private interests are and that of what the town's interests are. When you start having private investors that are investing into a trust, there's expectations. And those expectations can sometimes supersede, sometimes they can, they can push, they can sway, and all of a sudden there becomes the objectivity starts to become a little, and so while I, I do believe it's a good idea, it would, I think a lot more, um, research would need to go into, how do you structure that such a way, so that the town's interests are always at the forefront?
I agree, I agree.
Anybody else? Okay. Uh. So.
I'll do one more thing there. What's, as, as council. What's, as, as council, what, what do you wanna see as our next best, we got this big document here that, you know, we're gonna use to apply for funding, all the rest of that. I think there's a lot of really good things in here that we could do to take the small steps that are within our control, things like bylaws, fees, stuff like that. How do you wanna see our next steps as a, as a council address this?
Well, I do think that we're gonna have to have a, a meeting amongst ourselves and. Uh, have it have a, a discussion on things that we can do, like Paul was saying, that are cheap enough that we can. Get done without, like, costing a lot and uh, without overstepping as well. So that will be the next steps, so having a meeting on, on this report and having the discussion, yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, some of these are staff, those staff led, some of these are in your strategy from. Uh, this, in the new year that we have strategy plan. Um, and I, I propose just whittling it away and starting.
Yeah.
Where we can, um, this, this budget cycle is, you know, midstream, so uh, any works would. Be discussed at budget deliberation, hopefully we're aiming for November. So, um, things like that could start, those discussions could start at that time, give staff time to review. Get costs together, things like that, so, um.
As well, progress.
And as well.
So, yeah, I think that's, those would be the next steps that we start doing. Uh, anything further? Uh, go ahead.
I'd like to say thank you again to the committee for all your time and effort, we really appreciate it.
Yes, I'm, I'm, thank you guys, good night. Uh, yeah. Uh, so, we, is, anything further? No? Okay, uh, so, questions been called to all the favor.
Mark.
Okay. Harry, uh, we will adhere and. Also, Whitestone, possibly, all the favor. We're retired, great, you guys are, thank you, Harry, you guys are retired.
Thanks, Erly.
Yeah, thanks.